My good, okay. It is six oh four P M. This is the Monday regular, oh, it is six oh four P M. July eighteenth. It is today is Monday. It is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and myself. We have executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the special board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, staff, or through outside research. Moving on to agenda item one point zero five approval of the agenda, actually one point zero four review of the agenda. And we have a couple of updates. Four point zero three consideration of MSD transportation facility pavement rehabilitation project change order. And six point zero two has been removed. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I proved to move, or moved to approve the agenda as a method.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item two point zero one, we have our H Y A report. I'd like to welcome Chris and John.
Good evening. It's nice to meet you, Jeremiah. I'm Chris McDuffie and this is John Bash and we are associates with Hazard Young and Ateya, and also known as H Y A. And we really appreciate the opportunity this evening to update you on the search for an interim superintendent. So we would like to touch on briefly the survey that closed on Friday, the other engagement and outreach efforts that we've been engaging in, the applicant pool as it stands of this afternoon, the process and next steps. So I'll turn it over to John to talk about the survey results.
Good evening. And again, thank you for having us for this important update tonight. First, some great news that your community is highly engaged. We, you told us this would be the case, and indeed with the survey, that's exactly what happened. We had five hundred ninety-four responses to the survey and a very nice cross section of participant groups. The largest group to respond were family members of a current student at nearly half of those respondents, forty-nine percent. The next largest group were your teachers and certificated staff, a hundred fifteen of them participated. Behind them were your community members or alumni from Monroe, sixty-two of them, followed by forty-eight students, forty-four classified staff, and then some smaller slices of the pie, which is typical school administrators, district administrators are simply smaller in numbers. So that's what happens, right? Fourteen community leaders and four folks that identified themselves as community partners with the district. We generally like to see right around ten percent in terms of a sampling with a survey like this. And while neither of us are statisticians, that's what we're repeatedly told is a pretty strong sample set to rely on in terms of gleaning the perceptions or the opinions of your community. Across those nearly six hundred, fifty-seven percent indicated that they've been part of the Monroe community for eleven or more years. The other categories we had were zero to four years, that was sixteen percent, and five to ten years at just over twenty-seven percent. Not a significant variable, but we like to share that with board members because we found some districts are interested in, especially if their demographics are changing, what kind of participation they had in this particular sample. And so why did we do this survey? Well, we wanted an engagement opportunity that was clear when we did our planning meeting with you. And number two, we wanted your community to weigh in mostly on the most important qualities and characteristics they want and the interim superintendent leader that you all will consider here very soon. And so what we did is poured through the narrative responses to the questions on the survey, and we provided board members with access to view the same. And so we're going to share what we saw emerge as very broad themes. Now, before I get into those, I want to clarify, this is not an attempt to capture all the, what you might identify as sub-themes or programmatic kinds of topics that people chose to focus on. This is truly a macro view of themes where a number of sub-themes could fit underneath them. And after I go through these, I'm going to be asking the five of you, do you think we missed anything? Because we want to make sure based on any reading you did that we've captured everything. So with that, the first theme we saw, and this was across all three questions we asked. We asked, what are the greatest strengths of the district? What are the greatest challenges or issues facing the district? And then what are the desired qualities and characteristics? So in reading through all of that response, the one we lead with is your community, your stakeholders want a leader of high integrity who can build trust and greater unity across the system and within the community. We would add that there was also, there were also several comments indicating they wanted a leader able to build greater support in the community for the school district and your mission, what you're doing every day for kids here. The second theme we identified was Monroe stakeholders want a leader who can help create a shared vision and priorities for the district, followed by a leader who's deeply committed to effective listening, communication, and stakeholder engagement. And our fourth and final theme was a leader who prioritizes the needs of students and families in making decisions. We don't purport to have covered all of the landscape, but typically we come up with four to six themes, given the short amount of time we had for this survey. We're still impressed with the response. But I pause there and invite you to weigh in. Did we miss any very broad themes that you think should be included with that set? Okay. Well, good. We always hope that, you know, we come close to capturing a synthesis there. And, and I want to, before I move from that, I want to thank the board, number one, many of you got the word out that this was an engagement opportunity. I think that had something to do with the participation. Want to thank the communications lead, Erin. She did a great job advertising and making sure the website prominently included that opportunity. And everybody who took time to complete the survey. Some people put lengthy responses in. You could tell they spent a lot of time, not only writing, but thinking about what they wanted to share. So.
Can I ask a question about something that is missing? I know that we published the survey in Spanish and I didn't see any responses in Spanish. And I wasn't sure if that's because responses were translated or we didn't receive any. Or so just wondering if there's any information available there.
Yeah, we did some translation, knowing that it primarily English speaking report tonight. And so what we'll do in follow-up and thank you, because this also reminds me that while we don't have a graphic for you this, this evening, we are going to provide to your communications person and we'll email this to each board member, a chart that shows the participation rates that I mentioned. And then what I'll do for you is separate out what the Spanish language responses were. And so you can see those separate from the whole group. Thank you.
Anything further on the survey? Okay, hearing then, we wanted to mention the other effort that has been underway. And again, we have been kind of working on all of these items, kind of, you know, every hour, every day, given the tight timeline. So we apologize, we weren't able to get some of these graphics into your packet in time. But as John mentioned, we'll send it out to you by tomorrow morning. We've really got them almost, you know, completely ready for your review anyway. So that will become part of the public record and, and be on your website, I assume too. So the other area that you encouraged us to pursue, even though it wasn't a part of our original proposal, because typically in an interim search, you, you aren't able to go to these lengths, but we were so committed and we heard you and we, we hear from your community the need to listen to as many voices as possible. And so we did an outreach to, at this point, it's twenty individuals for one-on-one interviews. And that's a cross-section of staff and students and leaders, union leaders, business leaders, community leaders, principals, teachers, et cetera. So we've got a good summary of that as well for you. But wanted just to mention that tonight, we have some calls into some folks that we haven't heard back yet from, but we should have that within the next day or two. So maybe when we see you on Thursday, we could kind of wrap all of that up. But again, twenty individuals for sit-down one-on-ones or phone calls, which was, which was really wonderful and, and informing. So we'd like to talk a bit about the current status of the applicant pool. Again, that's evolving hourly. So this is as of, we left our homes this afternoon to come here and wanted to let you know. First of all, we made an effort to reach out to folks we thought would be good fits and may be interested. We did a personal outreach and conversations, either in person or by phone with fifteen individuals. And from that, we had ten folks who started the application process. Remember that is housed on the H Y A website. So they need to log on and, and continue the process through our website as a firm. So ten were underway as of this afternoon, seven were fully complete. Remember that it's posted, open until filled. So again, we're, we're going to monitor that as we move forward and keep you informed. So seven were fully complete as of this afternoon. Of those, three are female and seven are male. Five of those, ten, excuse me, yes, five of the ten have superintendent experience. The others are central office leaders. And three of those have Washington-specific experience. So just to give you a snapshot of the current status of the applicant pool. And all those details will be shared with you in the next couple of days. And John, do you want to mention their access to that information?
Sure, yeah. So the, as we look ahead to next steps in the process, I'll also mention that both Christine and I are conducting reference calls, doing Google searches on candidates. If we do find any new stories or any issues that we need to explore with a candidate, that's part of the conversation we're having in pre-screening discussions with them, basically to ensure that what we anticipate you might be interested in knowing or understanding more about. We ask those things upfront. In doing so, what we're also preparing our summaries on each candidate for you, based on what we saw in the application, even though you'll have access to all those materials as well. Feedback from board members in past searches is that they appreciate some summary work being done. So they not only can look at actual applicant material, but they can also look at the summary we prepared and what we learned beyond those materials in our vetting process. And so we're very busy with that right now. And so we plan to have that summary as complete as possible in the next couple of days. And then like we did with the survey narrative comments, we would provide you similar access so that you can go in and view completed application materials along with our draft summary. And I call it a draft because until we meet on the twenty-first, we may still have applicants that come forward. And so we leave room for that, knowing that we posted the job until filled. So on the twenty-first, we have a special board meeting planned with you. We did want to clarify, we assumed that would also be a six o'clock P M. Meeting, but we didn't clarify that together last time we met. So we wanted to throw that question out for this Thursday. Would you prefer just another six o'clock meeting or did you want to post that meeting at a different time?
Is there anyone that doesn't work for? Six o'clock it is.
All right. So we'll plan on that. And then like we shared last time, if any of your staff need assistance with agenda development, wording on the agenda, that sort of thing, we are ready to share that. We can even email someone which they could use. We just need to know who we're designated to work with on that and make sure we get that done within the required timelines for your public announcements. So we're ready when you are. And then on the twenty-first, then at that meeting, we're going to focus in on a few things. We're going to be in executive session, looking at each applicant. And an allowable executive session topic is to review the qualifications of candidates for public employment. So that'll be the reason for the closed session. In doing so, we'll also be discussing questions the board would like to ask candidates during interviews to measure those qualifications as well. And so we have provided the board already some sample interview questions to read and review. And if you haven't seen it yet, we actually gave you all a homework assignment. And we're asking you to prioritize after you've reviewed those questions, the top eleven questions you individually would prioritize for yourself and to email those to me by the twentieth at noon or sooner if you want. And what I will do is compile kind of a rank order, just a simple frequency table to show you which questions more than one of you chose. And it helps kind of distill down the set you may want to ask. But when you're gathered on the twenty-first, that is an important task that we need to nail down so we can prepare for the next step in our process update, which is we chose July twenty-eighth, another Thursday for interviews. And again, typically the timeframe for interviews depends on the number of candidates that you invite to participate. And so we're not going to ask you this evening, what kind of timeframe you want to establish. We just, at last time, we asked you to hold the date because that will, that generally takes longer as much as a half day or the better part of a day. Again, depending on how many candidates you choose. Beyond that, we continue to do some vetting. The only other question I'll bring back to your attention from our planning meeting is you do have the option to engage in a third-party background check with either the candidate, all the candidates you choose to participate in interviews, or many boards elect to limit that to the candidate they select and they make that a contingency on the offer of employment. The, the option there is to do that, some boards in an interim scenario elect not to do that, depending on the information we're able to uncover in our vetting of the candidates. So again, I'm not asking you for a decision tonight. But when we do our planning meeting, that will, will revisit that conversation. The public part of our meeting on the twenty-first will include a discussion regarding the interview format because that, that's not an allowable executive session topic. So in the public part of the special meeting, we're going to be revisiting the discussion we had around can there be or do you want to have a portion of the interview process open to the public so that they can observe and maybe give feedback on the candidate's response to your questions? And some of you are also very interested in having a closed session confidential interview just between the candidate and the board. We have facilitated one or the other, and we have facilitated both happening as part of an interview sequence. That too will drive out how much time we need to set aside for interviews. So I'm sharing that with you tonight because I'd like you reflecting on how you'd like to proceed with that. And what we're going to do in preparation is bring you some sample interview schedules to take a look at that have worked in other places that accommodate different choices. Christine, anything I've left out that you want to add?
Very thorough, Mr. Bash. I would just open it up for any questions the board may have for us for this evening.
I have one question, just something that I thought about after our, our workshop, when we were sort of brainstorming, you know, open, closed, how are we going to do this? Have you ever facilitated one where it, for whatever reason, people determined that a, a closed interview process would be better, but they included members outside of the board? So invited other community members or people within the district to be a part of that closed process?
No, I haven't been a part of that as an applicant nor as a facilitator. I, I'm just envisioning the challenges that that would possibly create in, in who's in the room with you. Kind of fraught with, with challenge. I, I think you're better off just to have a really an open forum. Whomever would like to join in to be observers and to provide you with feedback live, you know, and then have your board exec session interview. That's my reaction at this point.
Yeah, I would just add that what you just described often happens as part of the public portion, and it's one variation of including key stakeholders. Just like we're making these phone calls, it's often that same list of people that some boards invite to be part of a panel. And, and when the board then does a public interview, they are a panel listening in, taking notes, and then providing feedback forms back to the board. That's one model. So there are ways to include, but I, like Christine, I've not seen them involved in the closed session with the board. And the main reason is the boards in public school districts only hire one employee and it's the superintendent. And all the other input that you receive is just that, it's input. The five of you are the decision-makers with this particular position in the school district. And, and I share that, knowing, I think all of you know that, but sometimes the public is confused around, okay, well, wait a minute, we have some big panels when we hire a school principal, for example. Well, why not here? Well, number one, we talked about this being an interim process and being very condensed in terms of timing. And if in the future, the board decides to post a superintendent position that's not an interim position, we strongly advise you to put together a significant engagement process, knowing now what we've heard from your community about how much they value that. We were simply constricted with some time. Despite that, we've done quite a bit for an interim search already. Does that help? Okay.
So last time we had a workshop, my biggest hangup about having open interviews was if one of the superintendents already was employed with another school district and how that may reflect on their current position. Is that something out of the seven who have completed applications? Is that something that we would need to worry about?
I don't believe so. Of the seven that are completed and the ones that seemingly are rising to the top, that they are either and/or comfortable or currently not under contract. And, and so they're, it's not as big of an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure working with you and your staff and your community. So thanks for the opportunity.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, John. Directors, any other questions before they head out? Yeah, awesome. Thank you. We look forward to that report and yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, on to item, our agenda item three point zero one, audience comments. We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how, and everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for ten minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep the comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give thirty seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, please contact any staff member to help with how to move forward with a complaint about personnel. Okay, and we have a couple of audience comments tonight. First up is Melanie Lockhart. Hello, hey Melanie, just your name and your relationship to the school district.
I am Melanie Lockhart and I am a parent of three kids with two of whom are enrolled in Monroe for the fall. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Additionally, thank you for the due diligence this board took to come to a resolution with the month-long investigation and process involving our soon-to-be former superintendent. I know this process wasn't easy for you all and that there were several legal hurdles that required time and confidentiality. As you are continuing the process in search of an interim superintendent, I ask for the sake of transparency and moving forward in a unit, united effort as a community that you will conduct the final interviews in a public forum. I know that during a recent workshop and then again this evening, Director Bumpus, that some board members had referenced potential candidates who may not want to alert current employers that they are searching for a new position. However, I would argue, and as you also heard from H Y A, that by the final stage of any superintendent process, all candidates will expect there to be a public process of some kind. It is standard and with respect, maintaining privacy for what I presume will be an already narrowed field shouldn't be the reason to keep things in closed session. Now looping back to the separation agreement that was made public on Friday, the dollar amount, while large and unfortunate, wasn't unexpected when looking at the contracts signed by board members, past and present. I do hope this board has learned from this process for when it must negotiate future contracts. What was unexpected was the naming of one single board member as the sole reference point for future employment inquiries, especially given this board's long history of filtering all communications through its board president. I hope each and every one of you is asking yourself, why Chuck? I hope each and every one of you is asking yourself, why Chuck? While I understand that part of a negotiation requires some level of compromise and that there are elements that the public will never know, I also hope you can recognize and respect that from a public perspective, this looks an awful lot like a you scratch my back and I'll scratch your scenario. That the friendship that exists between Director Whitfield and Dr. Blasco got put first, rather than Director Whitfield doing his job as an elected school board member to put the kids, the district and our taxpayers at the forefront. So why Chuck? On the afternoon of December eleventh, twenty twenty one, two days before the board meeting where directors knew they would be hearing allegations of misconduct, Director Whitfield was texting, texting Dr. Blasco and I quote, I'm working on my defense of your performance incompetency for your position. Don't worry, I'm calling in the prayer warriors. He was already readying a reference before taking any allegations to heart from those he has elected to serve. Then during that virtual meeting, Director Whitfield turned off his camera and texted Dr. Blasco. You can tell Bill, my stomach is a notch just watching comments. If he wonders why I'm not on video, I know it's not a good impression for the public. From where I'm standing as a parent, this clause in the separation agreement is also not a good impression for the public. Finally, I want the board to consider what one person's re- response to a reference inquiry may be and how that person shares with the hiring entity will ultimately impact this district, how that reflects on the district, on the board and on those harmed by the stories told in the investigation. As an elected official, Director Whitfield, how can any of us be sure that you are truly putting our children's needs above that of a friend? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Heather?
Hey Heather.
Hi, uh, my name is Heather Young and I am a parent to uh, two boys in the district. Um, uh, two topics tonight. First, um, feedback about the summer program. Surprisingly, uh, everyone in the district apparently went on vacation at the same time and transportation is all torn up at the same time. And it seems like perhaps there should be a policy that everybody can't be gone at the same time when we're starting a new program. Just for, for future summers, it might be helpful to make sure that there's some kind of coverage in place so that we don't have the kinds of challenges that we had for the beginning of the summer program. Food for thought. Uh, on the issue of the superintendent agreement, you know, over the last year, um, the board has done a bit of a cha-cha. Uh, we've seen you come uh, forward in terms of your transparency and communication and willingness to listen to the public. And we've seen steps back and um, it has seemed like there are a lot more steps forward recently and we're very, very hopeful. But one of the things that needs to happen is that there needs to be no opportunity for there to even be the appearance of a conflict of interests. I, I've done a lot of complex negotiations behind closed doors in my career and I understand that there's complex give and take compromises that need to happen uh, and that you can't always explain the wheres and why fours. But um, to echo what Melanie has raised as a concern, Chuck being called out in this contract stinks to high heaven. There's only one member of the board whose actions have called into question the integrity with which this, these allegations would be taken and the integrity with which the investigation would be performed and their actions were one of the main causes that so many people signed on to the petition, asking for there to be a third party investigation. There's only one member of the board who has repeatedly complained about the Open Public Meetings Act and having to maintain transparency. And the records that have been released under Freedom and Information Act demonstrate why they don't like that. And so to put that one person who has repeatedly violated the integrity of their office as the point of contact, which is wildly outside the norms of business. It makes sense for it to be the president of the board or your HR director. Anything outside of that is outside the norms and absolutely reeks of cronyism. So I would ask the board to please reconsider that aspect of the contract and demonstrate the integrity that we know that you can bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Moving on to business, four point zero one, consideration of grants. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept grants received in four thousand dollars from Bearcat Pride for Flexish?
Sumed.
There is second?
Second.
Discussion. Now, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item four point zero two, consideration of separation and release agreement. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agreement authorized President Bumpus to sign for the board in the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve their agreement and authorize President Bumpus to sign for the board and the district. Discussion. I prepared a little something. To all of you here tonight, I want to start by sincerely thanking you for your passion and support for our schools. The situation involving Dr. Blasco has been challenging for everyone involved and many of you understandably have very strong feelings about it. Because this has been a personnel matter, much of the board's work related to this issue required confidentiality. As we move forward toward resolution tonight, I want to share with you additional context about the school board's decision to negotiate a separation agreement with Dr. Blasco. As publicly elected school board directors, we must protect the, the district and the taxpayers' interests. We want our community to understand that the board believes in consultation with the district's legal representation that the separation agreement with Dr. Black, uh, Blasco was the best option for the district as a whole. Separation agreements are about compromise and bringing clarity and resolution to complex, challenging and often nuanced situations. They are not necessarily about what might feel personally, morally or ethically right to any particular individual within our school community. At the end of the day, the board has a responsibility to operate in the long-term best interest of the district and minimize current and future risk and liabilities on behalf of the taxpaying public. While Dr. Blasco will receive one year severance pay, which includes his full salary, cost of all benefits and leave cash out to be paid in full by August thirty first, two thousand twenty-two, this amount is significantly less than the amount that would have been owed under his existing three-year contract if no separation agreement was reached. Additionally, this amount will not impact the district's budget for the upcoming school year as contingencies were built into the twenty-one, twenty-two budget that will cover this payout. Most importantly, it also provides resolution so that we can move forward in a positive direction as a community. Our other options, which we determined were ultimately not in the best interest of the district, were to, one, develop a plan of improvement and return Dr. Blasco to his position as superintendent, which we determined was not in the best interest of the district. Two, terminate for cause, which understandably may seem like the right, just or fair outcome to some, but in the absence of clearly illegal behavior, termination could become a potential point of legal dispute. Termination for cause is generally a very high bar to reach for any employee in the K through tw- twelve system. The behavior in question would have to be, would have to be so erroneous as to be non-medial, which have challenged in litigation would come down to a judge or jur- jury's determination, creating uncertainty of any outcome and significant potential risk for the district. Three, indefinite administrative leave until the existing multi-year contract expires. In this case, it would have meant paying Dr. Blasco's salary and benefits for three more years while he was on administrative leave. We as a board felt that negotiating a separation agreement was our best option. Tonight, we will vote on this agreement. It is my hope that if approved, this will help us all begin to heal as a district and community so that we can move forward together for the benefit of our students. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item four point zero three, consideration of MSD Transportation Facility Pavement Rehabilitation Project Change Order. Is there a motion?
Sumed.
My second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve of both CCDs and issues C O dash zero zero one for the amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Discussion?
Well, I have, I have some questions about this and I don't know if we have executive staff in the room.
We have the, yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So um, in, in reviewing the attachments to this item, um, I was, I'm hoping that you can just tell me the difference between the price that was originally approved and what it is now.
Yeah, the price right now is what it, uh, the addition of the six hundred and thirteen thousand. These were unforeseen uh, issues in the tur- in the soil contents located at the district uh, transportation field.
Okay, so, so you're, we're being asked to approve an additional six hundred and thirteen.
That is correct.
And um, from the attachments that indicated that the, that Park Place was used for like an environmental impact or, you know, research to be done prior to this project being started.
That is correct. Yeah, the most current project that was done nearest to that, that belonged to the school district was Park Place Middle School when it was rebuilt.
Okay.
And so the Harmsen is the company who uh, did the geological work and they use that as a comparison. If we wanted to do more and additional work, we would have had to excavate that area where the buses were prior to the thing. So that was the closest property.
Okay, so, so as I was reading through, you know, there's this piece that says, what did we forget to ask? Could we have avoided the change order costs? And while I can understand that the, the cost may not have changed, I'm a, I'm a little concerned about the cost may not have changed, but we would have known about it upfront had a geological study of the actual site where the work was to be done would have been completed.
Maybe that's probably a little not accurate at that point. If they had done a geological search where we had removed asphalt prior to that and spent that additional cost, we would have had to incorporate this into that. Cause what it is, it was the depth of the organic material that was put into that area years ago. I believe it was a nursery. I was in around fifty years ago when they actually purchased the property. But if we had spent additional money and we would have said, all right, Farmson would have said, hey, we're not going to be able to do it based on the Park Place property. We would have to do that property. There were, the bids would have been under a different scope and sequence of work that had to be done. We would have known upfront that we would had to have those in.
So I think that's what I'm saying is, you know, going forward as we're looking at projects, I was surprised by an increase of six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, right? I, and I, I, I read this stuff and I always try to turn it into something that is more familiar to me. So my husband works in pest control. Sometimes they have to do exclusion work on a home to make sure that, you know, they did address the, the issue of the pests, but they also prevent more from coming in. And he frequently has situations where the person who does that initial review maybe doesn't find all of the things and the pest control issue continues and they end up sending him out or sending somebody else out and a new bid is given to that customer for a whole bunch more money. And inevitably the customer is not happy about this. They feel like they've been working on it. So that's sort of where I'm, that's where this questioning is coming from.
Absolutely.
I, that's the situation I feel like the district has been put into. And so when I look at this, um, it just as a layperson, my question is going forward for projects, are we, are we going to try to avoid this? And, you know, maybe it would have been better to do the geological study at the site where the work was going to be done so that we know all of the costs in advance.
That is, that is an option to do that. Again, we would spend more money upfront in that analyzation process and that is an option we can look into more. We did not predict based on Harmsen who's worked here in this community for years. And we would hope, you know, whoever you hire wouldn't have a little bit of history into it. But again, once you excavate something like that, you're never going to know what was underneath it based on the age of that parking lot or the, call it our uh, bus transportation lot.
Okay.
That would be the difference in something like this.
Okay, and then my other question is um, where? Where is that money coming from?
That's still coming from our capital projects budget that we had uh, worked overtime with and saved in some areas.
Okay, and so there's sufficient funding.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
And it would also be a project that if we didn't, we obviously wouldn't be able to put our buses back on there here in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Just a, a little context, um, change orders are really, really common in the construction business when you're doing this. My husband has worked many, many jobs and I think on every single one, there's at least been one change order. So there's always a lot of stuff that's unforeseen in that and it's just kind of a, a common practice. So it didn't surprise me as much when I saw it, but um, I think the flip side is that if we spend more of the taxpayer money ahead of time, it still doesn't change the fact that we have to pay this, but then we're out more money at the same time, if that makes sense. So it's sort of like the, we saved money by not taking that extra step, but it's still this, even though that's what it is.
Okay, so, so then my ask is going to be that going forward, when we have the initial conversation, and obviously this was agreed to a long time ago. But that, that, that information, that conversation be included. You know what I mean? To say, just to have somebody say, this, it is standard. We fully anticipate that there's going to be a change order in the future. We're going to guess it could be up to this amount, but we really won't know until it happens, just, just so that it isn't a surprise.
Absolutely. And as Director Barnes said, you know, we, it's, we walk that fine line of do you spend another, you know, fifty thousand dollars to analyze that project cost or do you hope that you won't have change orders, which that's always been my goal as your executive directors come in and I'd like to have zero change orders. Uh, unfortunately, you know, you just don't know what's going to happen in your, whether it's a building or whether it's a, just even changing classrooms and retrofitting a room like this when you walk into it. Uh, and that's something we can have discussions on, especially when we look into our futures, we go into capital projects. You know, is that something our taxpayer here in Monroe wants us to do? Do we want more geological surveys prior to the actual uh, inception of building, a new building or repairing something? Cause that, again, you spend the money upfront or you do walk, you go as close as you can and then eventually you know, you're going to have to spend the money anyway, but wait till they excavate it, which saves money ahead of time. Cause if we had done, gone in and excavated part of that property, that money's us. So it was kinda, it's kind of a hit and miss or fine line. And you just try to do your best every time. Thank you. Any other questions I can?
Thanks for keeping our facilities beautiful and safe.
Well, thank you. We're doing our best. Thank you. We're doing our best and we're going to get those buses back in there before school starts. That's our next goal and get them out of the high school parking lot. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to superintendent consent agenda is, and five point zero seven, is there a motion?
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Second, second. There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated July eighteen, two thousand twelve. Discussion. No, all oppose? Or I'm sorry, all in favor? Raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item six, board consent agenda, is there a motion?
Move to approve the board consent agenda with the addition that we did of removing six point zero two.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the, oh no, sorry. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the modified listed and presented board consent agenda dated July eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item seven point zero one, board reports, comments, suggestions. Would anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Director Campbell.
Still I'm in the audience. So in regard to our special board meetings to get, if you finalize those for our meetings coming up to continue moving forward with HYA and our interim superintendent, that'd be really good to finalize the, and confirm the dates with them because they mentioned the twenty-first, but also the twenty-eighth and just wanted to make sure we get that counter finalized as soon as possible. That was just the only thing on my mind to make sure we didn't miss that.
Anyone else? Director Johnson?
Right, I have a few things to go over. First, I wanted to share something that, that has been really weighing on my mind a lot. So from a, a personal standpoint, I do not feel that I am able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a nation that does not recognize me as a whole person. And I took quite a while to think about how that shows up in my role as a director and I, and I sort of grappled with it and tried to decide if it was appropriate or not. I came to the decision that I wanted to express my solidarity and acknowledgement of the impact on our students, staff and families within the district. It is not, it is not for me a disrespect of our flag or our nation. It is simply a, holding our nation accountable and wanting the best for everyone here, which includes the people of Monroe School District. So I just wanted to share that with anybody who, who maybe saw or had questions about why I did not stand for the pledge. I also wanted to talk about, I'm getting to participate in a WASDA pilot. It's a training program that's going to be called Identity Discrimination, a look at federal involvement. Director Barnes, it has a lot of history in it and I think you'll be super into it. So I would, I would recommend it when it comes out. So I participated in one pilot event last week, have a second session this week. Those were via Zoom and then I get to go up to Anna Cordis at the beginning of August for an in-person training. So that's been really exciting, exciting. And then I also wanted to share and ask, there's the upcoming Ledge Reps Learn. On August ninth, it's Tips for Engaging with Your Legislators. And as we, you know, we're all seeing signs coming up around town again and that sort of thing. And so I certainly plan to attend and then Director Whitfield, I just wanted to make sure that it was on your radar. I think it's a, a great opportunity for us to continue, especially with a levy to advocate for, for our students and for our district. And then the last thing that I'll share is something that I, that I actually wanted to share at the last meeting and then I attended via Zoom and kind of chickened out and, and felt really awkward being the only person on Zoom. And so I, I, I didn't share then, so I'm going to take the opportunity to now. So I've continued to do some anti-racist work and just self-reflection and I had kind of a breakthrough at the courageous conversations training that I went to. And we were in a breakout room and I got, we were asked, the prompt was, what is your, what is an earlier, what was your first experience with race? And so the story that I shared was that when I was about four or five years old, so I was born in Ohio and then we moved to Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And then when I was seven, we moved across the country to Washington. So when we lived in Massachusetts, one of my best friends, Jonathan, lived in one of the condos downstairs. And again, I was like about four years old and apparently one day I said to him, you're Jewish and I'm American. And I was four, like I don't, I don't think that was any, it certainly wasn't my intention to be, to make a racist comment, but his grandma overheard us. And his grandma went to his mom and said, you know, that my mom was raising a racist and she needed to talk to me and they needed to, to correct me. And so in my anti-racist work and in doing my racial autobiography, you know, that's been sort of a family story lore that's been shared. And so I've, I've thought about it and for me, it's always been, you know, first off, like wanting to defend myself, like four-year-old me, that I didn't do anything wrong. And then second, it's always been emotional for me that, that my mom was accused of being racist or, or raising a racist. And so that's been, that's been heavy and something for me to work on. So when I shared the story the other day during this training, one of my partners asked me if I had ever talked to my mom about it. And other than telling the story, we had never talked about what, what it had been like, like what it meant to my mom or how it impacted her or anything like that. And so this last weekend, my mom and I had a conversation about it and it was, it was just great, like it, it's something that's been part of my life and part of my family's life. And even though we've told the story, we haven't, haven't talked about how it impacted us. So I just wanted to share, share that experience with everybody and, and just to let everyone know that I'm, I'm continuing to do the work.
Thanks. Thank you, Director Johnson. Any other? One else?
Director Whitfield.
I want to thank Director Johnson for filling in for me on the legislative side. You know, my dad got, he was into hospice. And it just knocked the, knocked the wind out of my sail and with my responsibilities at work and that, and then the board. There's a couple of things going on at the board, if you hadn't, if you hadn't heard. Anyway, she's filled in and it's, I haven't done as good a job as I, I could have, but it, Sarah's, Director Johnson has stepped in and helped and I appreciate that. But it just, yeah, knocked, knocked the wind out of my sail. And I'll, I'll tell you, I went and saw him today or on Sunday and one of the things I talk about is, you know, kind of a past things in his memory and we talked about football and, you know, he played for Monroe Football. And he could, you know, his short-term memory is not that great, but long-term memory, he knew guys, he knew about four or five people that he played with on the team. And I also asked him, he always likes to talk about the, about being on the school board and because he used to be a school board director. So trying to engage him and we were talking about the superintendents that he had, you know, I was asking them their names and so it was just, you know, here we are looking at another superintendent and that there's many more that have gone before us and maybe I'll research it and just go through the, the sequence and how long they've served. But it's just kind of an interesting perspective and listening to it from somebody that's ninety-two years old and probably the last surviving, well, school board director, obviously, but maybe the Monroe graduate, maybe there might be somebody in their ninety-nines, something like that. So anyway, oh, and the other thing is the superintendent search. I love the speed we're going. This is like business speed. It's like get it done. Get the, get the schedules, knock it out, get the candidates, have the interview and go through it thoroughly correctly, but get it done. Some of the things in the school system is extremely slow and the process goes on, it seems forever, takes months and months. So I really like this and I appreciate the work that John and Chris are doing. And we could get, having this upcoming meeting and the following meeting, I think we can get a lot accomplished and get on and get back in business, get ready for the new school year.
So I will say one thing that I have been enjoying and taking advantage of over this break is I've really been diving into Fair for All. I've been reading the Substacks that they put out. I've been watching the videos. And for anybody out there, any teachers who are looking for free professional development or anyone in the community who's looking to do the work of combating racism and just making our district as a whole better for absolutely everyone with a pro-human approach. I'd recommend you go take a look at all of the free stuff that they offer. There's some really good information out there.
It was a lot. I don't have anything that detailed, but I do have ages eighteen and under Monday through Friday since July or June twenty-seventh until August twenty-sixth, there's free summer lunch from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty at Frank Wagner. So you've got kids, if you've got lots of kids like I do, you know, they didn't say drop off and leave. They said, you just got to pick up your lunch and head out though, so can't just drop off my kids and leave. Music in the Park, if you're a Monroe resident, the last Music in the Park, I think for the summer is this Friday. And I hear they're going to have Soul Searching Band and it's Elvis and Aretha. So if you're trying to boogie down, Music in the Park, this Friday, six thirty PM to eight thirty PM. And National Night Out, do you know the date? August second, that's also coming up. And you know what? I just, I want to say how much I appreciate this board. Y'all, we have come a long way and I just appreciate you all for showing up, for doing the work, for reading all of the things, for following up, for being such amazing leaders in this community and for remaining committed to great work. So I appreciate you all for being so honest and open and having a growth mindset. I believe that everyone here was meant to be here and serve in their capacity and I'm just really excited for all of the good things that are yet to come. Thank you, HYA, for your presentation. So excited for all of those dates that we have in our calendar and all of the information I get to read. So many good opportunities to, you know, to learn and read. And I lastly, I do want to thank our community for engaging with us. That is a lot of information that we were able to gather, not we, HYA was able to gather for us through those survey, surveys. I know it's summertime, I know the kids are home and I really appreciate the community for engaging with us and being honest and open and transparent in their opinions. So thank you so much. And that's all we've got. That's all I've got. It is seven oh nine PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.